All right, noting that it is 7:01, I will call this meeting of the Committee of the Hall to order. The first item of business is, I don't even know what it is. Pledge of Allegiance, because my agenda didn't come up yet.
The pledge of allegiance is considered by the United States of America and due to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's next, Chad, since my agenda still isn't up?
Roll call is next.
Oh, roll call.
Alder Allen.
Present, although not prepared.
Mayor Aratafrada.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jettser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
She's not coming.
Alder Udell, did she advise you?
She did last night.
Okay, excellent. I will mark her absent with excuse. Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Excellent. Next item is the approval of minutes of the October 25th meeting.
I'm overproven.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. Next item is public appearances for any non-agenda items. Since there's nobody in the room, we will move on to the agenda items, which is the referendum update. So I chatted with Chad a bit about this the other day, and we're reaching points where we have to start making some important decisions probably in January. So today you'll be getting some background information about what we have in store for you. And Chad, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Alder Allen. Before I get started, I do want to acknowledge the team here at City Hall that's been working on the referendum planning process. Deputy City Administrator Adam Sayer, Finance Director Misty Dodge, and City Clerk Tracy Oldenburg have been doing a lot of work behind the scenes and have been contributing at a high level related to the information that you're about to see and also where we are currently at in the process. For tonight's conversation, we're going to be looking at this thing initially at a very high level, and I want you to keep that in mind as we start to work through these slides here. And at some point later in the conversation this evening, we will look to obtain some goals and objectives, and those are listed here on the slide. First one is going to be, let's confirm the timeline that we're all working on here. Mueller Communications presented a timeline at the September Committee of the Hall. We'd like to reassess that timeline and confirm whether or not the council is interested in keeping that timeline. The next item we'd like to address this evening is, we'd really need direction from council to staff as far as, can you identify your comfort level with a referendum? And if so, what is a dollar amount that you would like staff to focus on to help prepare options that dig deeper than what you're going to see tonight to make up that particular dollar amount? Once we've identified ideally a dollar amount that council is interested in staff spending much more time on, we'd also like to know, at least in reasonably specific terms, what would you like to see within that particular dollar amount for the options? We can obviously present multiple different options at any given dollar amount, and a variety of different things depending on the dollar amount could potentially go in there. So we'd like to get some guidance and direction from council so that the next time we have a presentation and an update, we can, again, get a little bit deeper every time until we come to ultimate conclusion as to what could be on that referendum. And I will ask, for the purposes of the presentation, let's hold all the questions till the end. I'll work through this stuff, and I think that's important just because it's high level and we could get really deep into these things pretty easily. I mean, our work group has done it over and over. I mean, once you start looking at something like, well, what about this, or what about that? So I think that that would definitely take us off task here in a hurry if we did that. But I'd be happy to go back and look at slides as we get to the end and answer questions on specific slides or just other, you know, we can start to work our way through the timelines and the amounts and those sorts of things and answer questions at that point in time. So some background on the process and where we're at now. Obviously, we began talking about a referendum, I think at least in the June Committee of the Hall, if not perhaps even in May. But certainly in the June Committee of the Hall, we had our financial advisors, Ellers, come in, and they presented various options to the council to consider that could increase revenue for the city. Those options included a referendum, a wheel tax, utility tax, and a few other options that were available for the council to consider. It was evident from the feedback from the council that the clear item that the council wanted to pursue at this point in time was a referendum, and we then began to begin the planning process for what a referendum might look like. As with any city meeting, all of those meetings are available on Fact TV for the public to take a look at if they want to get more information in regards to how we got here this evening. The general feedback that staff has heard from the council so far as it relates to a referendum is the things that you would like to see included in there, our staff, or at least considered for inclusion, our staff positions, additional transit options, and funding operations costs related to a new police facility. Through the course of the conversation, we've heard varying dollar amounts that the council might be comfortable with, that I think that's ranged from maybe $0 to $5 million. So we hopefully, again, as I've mentioned, will be able to begin to determine what the comfort level of the body is as a whole, so we can continue our planning efforts. When we look at potential referendum items, I kind of look at them in a few different buckets or categories. One of those buckets or categories would be staffing. Another would be cost of living adjustments. A third would be transit, and a fourth would be facility costs. And a fifth potentially could be other costs that have not yet been identified or other initiatives that have not yet been identified. For the purposes of the conversation this evening, we've really focused on the first four buckets based upon feedback from the council that we've heard and so forth. So the first item that would be included in those buckets would be staffing. And an all-in staffing cost based upon the Baker-Tilly identified study, I'm sorry, the Baker-Tilly study identified positions, the additional public safety positions that were identified and assessed through the Baker-Tilly study, as well as the other budget requests that were solicited during the operating budget process, still have an outstanding cost to implement all of those at approximately $6.2 million. Transit, as I've mentioned in other conversations, we are working with Metro to identify what the cost will be to enhance our transit services. We have a couple of options, and we've got a slide on that a little bit later. But the two primary options are improving our existing east-west transit lines and also a consideration for an extension of the BRT line from McQuaid Road to City Hall. Of course, there could be other items that could become considerations, but those have been the two primary transit options that the city has been considering at this point in time, at least as it relates to metro transit services. I have reached out to Metro again this week to see if I could get updated quotes for the east-west transit in particular, and unfortunately, I do not have those. They have not yet been able to provide those. So for the purposes of the conversation this evening, we've identified a placeholder amount of $500,000. Obviously, that could change depending on what the council's desire is and/or what the estimate comes in at from Metro to provide, you know, the east-west transit. And we also have the new police facility annual cost listed as a consideration here, and we've got slides again on each of the three of these that go into a bit more detail about what's in those. And then a total cost for just those three items would be approximately $7.3 million. And if you look at a cost of living adjustment and factor that in, if the council wishes to include that, you know, again, just looking at ranges, just so the council has an idea of what things cost, a 2.5% cost of living adjustment for city staff would equate to about $475,000, and a 5% cost of living adjustment would be about $950,000. From a staffing perspective, we all are aware of the study that was done by Baker-Tilly earlier this year. As a result of that study, there are still several unfunded positions that remain based upon what we were able to incorporate in the budget that was recently passed by council. But you can see the remaining positions are listed here from the Baker-Tilly study. To fund those positions that are listed, and I think that's about nine positions or so, you're looking at about $1.4 million. The additional public safety positions, starting with police, that were identified by the department and preliminarily assessed by Baker-Tilly, include the list here. The cost of those particular police positions, police department positions, if we were to implement all of those positions, is about $2.1 million. Our fire department, as you also saw, there was a staffing plan, again, included within the Baker-Tilly study and preliminary assessed by Baker-Tilly. In order to add the remaining positions outside the identified positions in the Baker-Tilly study, you'd be looking at, as well as an increase of $3 per hour in the paid-on-call hourly rate, you'd be looking at just shy of $1 million to implement those positions and that increase in on-call pay, or I'm sorry, paid-on-call pay. Our EMS department or district also, through the budget process, identified future need for seven paramedics to implement a third ambulance at some point within the next two to five years. Currently, under the agreement that we have through the Fitron EMS district, the city share for seven paramedics would be about $480,000. Other positions that were identified through the budget process, again, as a reminder, in a uncharacteristic opportunity, all department heads were afforded the opportunity to identify the positions they felt were needed in their department over the next five years. And you can see the list of those positions that were not included in either the Baker-Tilly study or in public safety. I do want to point out, the custodian listed in the hub slash public works maintenance building has the asterix by that. At this point in time, the plan is to use that $125,000 from the reserve, that was reserved in the 2024 budget, as part of the operating costs associated with the hub. And then you'll see in another slide regarding the police department operating costs, new police facility operating costs, that there are two custodians listed there. The cost of those custodians is in the dollar amount for that particular item. So the council does have flexibility if those are positions that they want to, you know, pursue. You know, for instance, if they want to pursue one of the custodian positions for the police department, but maybe not the police department operating expenses, that could be pulled out as an example. So as a summary of what we're looking at just from staffing, again, there's still nine positions remaining in the Baker-Tilly study. There's approximately 16 requested positions in the police department outside the Baker-Tilly study, but yet associated. Same goes with fire, seven positions within, but not directly a part of the Baker-Tilly study, seven positions in EMS, and then 12 other positions have been identified, again, with a cost of $6.2 million to implement. When we look at transit, one of the things, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, that we're considering is enhanced service and expanded hours in operation for the Line 65 and Line 75, or Route 65 and Route 75. Those routes generally work, at least as it relates to the city of Pittsburgh, from our northeast corner, the Southdale neighborhood, to City Hall campus. That's the 65. And the 75 generally operates from Fishatory Road out McKee Road and then off to the west. We are waiting, again, as I mentioned earlier, the cost to improve transit service on the 75 and 65. Those are typically running only at peak times in the morning and afternoon, Monday through Friday. They do not run in the evenings. They do not run on the weekends. We have met with Metro. They have provided estimates to expand BRT service. As we know, currently, BRT is being planned for McKee Road to Greenway Cross as part of a federal grant application that Metro is submitting. That would, part of the BRT line would have approximately four stops between Greenway Cross and McKee Road, and we would obviously be responsible for the capital costs associated for those stops, as well as the bus. And it's our plan at this point in time to cover all or the vast majority of those capital costs with TID number 10. The annual operating costs for the BRT line between McKee Road and Greenway Cross is estimated to be generally neutral to what we are paying currently. So we are not anticipating a significant change in our operating costs for metro transit services based on the estimates that have been provided as of November 29, 2023. If the council has a desire to extend BRT from McKee Road to City Hall, the estimated annual operating cost for that extension from McKee Road to City Hall is an additional $315,000 a year. And the estimated capital costs associated with extending that line would include probably two additional transit stations at a cost of $1 to $1.5 million apiece, and an additional electric bus at a cost of $1.5 to $2 million for that bus. So due to the awaiting further information from Metro, as well as, you know, additional direction at some point from the city council, we have elected to just put a $500,000 placeholder in this part of the referendum conversation. The operating costs associated with the proposed new police facility, again, was estimated to have, need two custodians to staff that building, while not necessarily 24/7. The building does operate 24/7, which would necessitate more frequent custodian coverage than a building such as the City Hall or the library. Utilities, maintenance, and insurance are estimated to cost about $280,000, and then ongoing capital costs are estimated at about $184,000. So we're estimating currently that the annual operating cost for the police facility is about $640,000. So getting down to what does all that look like as it relates to the impact on Pittsburgh residential taxpayers in particular? If you were to look at all the things that I just talked about in all the previous slides, the total amount for all of those items is about $8.6 million. You can see what that brings to the table on the left-hand side of the slide. All the positions are listed, and it also notes that there's an increase in the POX rate to $15 an hour. Transit improvements at about, actually, that should be $500,000, depending on how the city elects to do it. It could go as high as 815 if the city council elects to fund perhaps two initiatives related to that. And then we can also look at the PD facility, utilities, maintenance, et cetera, ongoing capital costs, and this would include a 5% cost of living adjustment. So you can see how we broke this down is, per 100,000 of assessed value, you'd be looking at $16 a month or $187 a year. When you look at the average assessed residential property in the city of Pittsburgh currently at just shy of $382,000, the cost to do all of these items would be approximately $60 per month and a total of $715 per year. Based on last night's action at the city council meeting in approving the resolution to accept the COPS grant, an additional option for the council to consider, and we have several items here for conversation, is a referendum that would fund just those five positions and take the assessment of the community as to whether or not they are willing to fund the additional cost related to those five positions. On the average home, you would see the impact is $5 per month or about $56 a year for those additional five police officers that were approved, at least the grant that was accepted last evening. If you look at another option, the five police officers that were accepted in the grant and the Baker-Tilly study, and I do want to back up, that these are for conversational pieces only. This is not a recommendation from staff at this point in time. There is flexibility based upon the conversation later this evening to mix and match areas, to move positions around, and things that you want to see included in a particular dollar amount. But we at least wanted to provide some examples for the council to be able to look at and put some real numbers to what you get for those real numbers. So if you look at adding the five police officer positions plus the positions that were identified in the Baker-Tilly study, you're looking at a cost of a referendum at about $2 million, which equates to about $14 per month or $173 a year on the average assessed Pittsburgh residential property. Another look, and again, we're taking a high-level look, if you look at the COPS positions plus the Baker-Tilly study plus all of the other identified public safety positions that have been noted, you'd be looking at approximately $5 million in order to implement all of those. The average cost, I'm sorry, the cost per month on the average assessed home, $35 a month, $416 a year. If you were to look at adding all of the staffing positions and including transit at $500,000, you'd be looking at a $5.5 million referendum, and that would be approximately $38 a month per average house, residential house, and about $458 a year. So this is a summary of the table, or summary table of the options that have just been provided, so you can kind of see and compare what you get based upon the respective dollar amounts. Excuse me, so working left to right, an all-inclusive option of $8.6 million equates to $60 a month, $715 a year on the average residential property. Funding for the five police officers related to the COPS grant, you're looking at a $670,000 referendum, $5 a month, $56 a year. Those COPS positions and the Baker-Tilly positions, $2 million, $14 a month, $173 a year. The COPS positions, the Baker-Tilly positions, and the remaining public safety positions, $5 million approximately, average cost, $35 a month, $416 a year. And if you were to look at all the staffing positions plus transit, you'd be looking at approximately $38 a month, $460 a year. Some other options for the council to take a look at, we also wanted to make sure the council saw what does a $20 a month option look like, $25 a month, 30, 45, 50, and so forth. So you can see, for instance, on the table here, if the council was thinking $20 a month was what would be the best fit for their liking, that would be approximately $2.9 million that would be requested under that referendum that could be utilized. And clearly, based on the council action, the five COPS positions end up in just about every, really every option based upon the action last night. So then that looks at, you know, what other things would you want to do using the $20, $2.9 million example as a talking point here? What else would go in there for the additional, you know, roughly $2.2 million from the council perspective? So you can see how we worked this through. If you're looking at $25 a month, you're looking at 3.5 million. $30 a month is 4.2 million. And $45 a month is 6.5 million. $50 a month is 7.2 million. And $55 a month is just under $8 million. So the referendum timeline that we've talked about previously and was presented by Mueller when they did their presentation to council back in September at the Committee of the Hall about 60 days ago, is they're currently working on assessment and survey development and working with staff to identify what should be in the survey, and we're answering some high-level questions for them and some policy-related questions based upon council feedback for them. They anticipate a survey would be sent to all residential addresses in the city of Pittsburgh in March. They would present the survey results to the council at the April 24 Committee of the Hall. There would be a vote by the city council as to whether or not we head to referendum and what specifically would be in the referendum question on either May 7 or May 21. And the question has to be to Dane County no later than June 5 in order to meet our statutory obligation of, I think it's 70 days in advance of the August 13 referendum. If, excuse me, if council voted in this example in May to place a referendum question on the ballot for August, then we would look to move into Phase 3, and I should back up. When Mueller was here in September, they identified a two-phase approach. We have them under contract for the two phases currently, with an option to do the third phase. The first two phases, the assessment and survey and reporting of the survey results. And then if the council elects to do a referendum, the third phase is the referendum outreach and education component of their services. So they would begin to move into Phase 3 if the council approved a referendum question in May and use that approximately 75 to 90 days for their outreach, communication, and other efforts related to educating and informing the community for the need for the referendum and what's on it, and how they will find that referendum question on the ballot. So that is a fairly quick run-through at the high level to give you guys some idea on what the cost might be, what could go in a potential referendum, and so forth. So we can transition to getting some direction, although I will make a pause, that are there any questions that don't necessarily fit into any of the three bullet points that are currently on the screen right now? We could take those questions. Yes?
We don't have to discuss this right now, but I do think we should talk about impact fees as well for the police station. That came up at our original discussion, and we haven't really brought it up since, but seems like an apt discussion for this period of time when we're talking about the police facility.
Sure. Yep, we can definitely work that back into the conversation a bit more deeply.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. When was the last time there was a cost of living adjustment for staff?
Typically, there has been one every year. There's a 2.5% provided in the 2024 budget. I think there was a 3% provided in the 2023 budget. We brought this to the table just as, again, a consideration piece because obviously there is a levy impact on that. Anytime there's a cost of living adjustment, and, you know, if you do a 2.5% cost of living adjustment, that's approximately, you know, three to four positions there, right? It's almost a half million dollars.
All right. The other question I had was about the police staffing. You pointed out that there's nine positions that the police department, nine new sworn officers that the police department is currently requesting. Does that include the five that are in the COPS grant? So they're asking for four additional beyond that?
Correct. Other questions?
I have a question for the new facility, the cost of maintaining. I know that there is, you are considered two custodian for $176,000. Maybe we need to look at other options like outsourcing the cleaning services. It could be cheaper. We don't pay payroll tax, we don't pay 401K, health insurance, and I think we need to consider our option two.
Okay.
And the other thing is, if we are aiming to have a sustainable police facility with geothermal and solar, I think that one, it will decrease how much we are paying in utilities. So we have to consider that. And then I want to know what are the ongoing capital costs? What does include there? Supplies? What is $140,000 for what?
We'll double-check what we have listed there. My, I won't speculate until I see if I have that in front of me.
Because I see $130,000, and it's very scary number, you know, because it's a lot of money. I was thinking that the maintenance of this facility will be around less than $400,000.
Yeah. I don't have that information, but what I can say is what I speculate, and I can get that from finances. You're talking about debt repayment. You're talking about mechanical systems as far as setting aside money to replace mechanical systems when they fail, those sorts of things.
Replacement fund and all of that?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, would be correct. Do we have more detail?
We can do that. Yes?
Couple of things. Just circling back to the BRT, the Bus Rapid Transit. The north and south, I know the east and west are up, but the north and south, at least from my involvement with the Transportation Policy Board under Madison, that wasn't scheduled till 2027. Has that date been moved up?
No.
No, it's still scheduled for 2027.
Correct.
And we're just looking at next steps for, in case we want to extend. Is that correct?
Yeah, so my understanding with the metro service changes that went into place in June, the B route that is running on Fish hatchery road is running at a similar frequency and timing as the BRT route will eventually run.
Correct.
The difference being is that once BRT is live, you will have stations that are located probably within the median of Fish Hatchery Road. And then you'll also have longer buses, more amenities on the buses and/or at the stations, and that will officially be the BRT-level service. And that is anticipated to be operational in 2027, assuming grant funding comes into play and that construction and design all stays on plan and schedule.
We're still on that schedule, then?
Yes.
Then, back to page 20. If you could take it back. You mentioned the June 5th question, deadline to county. When we, as a council, as a body, decide on a referendum, is it one question, or can it be several questions?
It's my understanding that only one question can go on the ballot.
Okay. All right. I know there was lots of conversation at one time about one, two, or three. So, but that's...
In an advisory referendum, it's my understanding you could have multiple questions. But in a binding referendum, which is what this would be, it's one question.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Can we ask any question now, or what is it?
Yeah, go for it. Why not?
Or we are going in an order, you know? Okay, so can I go first?
Yeah, please. Gabriella had a question.
You allow me?
Well, Gabriella had her hand up first.
Okay.
But since you have taken control, I will...
No, I'm sorry. I am asking you if I can speak.
Let's get Gabriella and then go back.
I'm curious about, so, you know, we're doing the feasibility study for the teen center. And we also have long-term in the CIP, a community center, potentially in the North Fish Hatchery Road neighborhood. Do we have any sense of what the possible range of operating costs for, if we did choose to add those facilities? You know, that's in the CIP. So I feel like that's something that we should at least have ballpark numbers in our head.
We could look at that. I think we would have to estimate the size of the facility, which we don't have right now. So we'd just be purely speculative. But we, you know, we could potentially try to come up with some sort of number for the council to take a look at. If it was a, you know, 10,000-square-foot facility, you know, what would it cost to construct and potentially operate? And typically, how we base some of our operating cost estimates on is a percentage of the cost of the building. You know, typically, it's, I think we've been using 0.5% of the cost of the building. And then we can utilize some historical information from other city facilities. It might give us an estimate on what we might be paying for utilities and so forth.
It'd just be interesting to have those numbers available to us for conversation. Thanks.
So we'll see if we can come up with something on the potential community center and teen center.
Well, one presumes we might also need a staff position to deal with programming, too.
No.
Well, there is the Community Services Specialist position that was included in the 2024 budget. We still obviously need to finalize job description there. But it's a potential that that position could have some involvement in assisting with those facilities, in addition to perhaps our RAC department.
As you are well aware, you can only dump so many duties on one body. So, I mean, I don't know what it takes to run a teen center. But go ahead, Julia.
Yeah, so I, you know, can you put a slide number 20? Where you have the timeline. So, you know, one question that I have about this, I, you know, I am concerned about that. When the survey is going to go to the resident in March? I think it's too late. You know, I mean, we are, and also, because we are already working with this company. I don't know what it's taking, so it's going to take three months to develop a survey? Four months? And my other concern is that I, I don't know. This is a question for the council here. Is, this is the council that we are, you know, we are discussing this referendum. And I think this is the council that should vote. We shouldn't be voting in May. Maybe we have new council members. Those people, they have not been involved in the process. And now they had to make a decision where they have not been a part. And maybe they don't know. So I think, this is what I, you know, I would prefer that this council make the decision in March, beginning of April, because we are the one that we are going to make all the decisions moving forward. So that one is my concern. That's it. And then from June, you said, May to August, referendum education. When August is only two weeks, so practically, we are going to have May, June, three months to do referendum education. I don't know if it's going to be enough time to do the education. You know, it's going to be summertime. People are going to be on vacation, not paying attention. So I don't know. I have those concerns about this timeline.
Well, I agree that March is probably a little too late for the survey going out. I would like to see the survey go out in February. The council vote, so at some point, the council has to, we're going to have to make a vote on whether we're going to do Phase 3 of the study. And that obviously will have to be sooner. That will be before the election. It's going to have to be before the election, even though it's not on that guide. I presume that the May 7th or May 21st council votes, I don't think those are the right dates either, but, because those would not be council meeting dates in May.
You're correct. That does not appear to be the 7th or the 12th.
So at the, if, I don't know if the April 24th date is correct, but if that's correct, then we have a meeting on April 23rd, which we can't do any action at. We can't take any consequential action because that'll be the first meeting of the new council. So I presume for that, for whatever May council meeting you're thinking of, that's the date when we would actually vote on the actual question that would go on the ballot. Because we have, we are the ones who would be deciding what the wording for that question is. So we could, I mean, we could vote on that earlier. The problem is, if you back that up, so we're going to have, let's say we get the survey out to the residents in February, we're going to have to get all that information back, sort through it, and then make decisions about it. Because, and that may take more than a month because, I mean, there's going to be some significant staff time. Plus, we're going to have to have at least a meeting or two to chat about what we want to, what we actually want to include in the referendum based on the resident's survey. So there's just, the election comes at an unfortunate time. But, I mean, maybe we could have that all done for the first meeting in April. I mean, it's really up to us how much we want to push it. But I think we would have, if we, if we, I don't think we need to, I don't think it's going to take till the end of February to come up with an assessment. I think we can get that done in January. But I, I mean, did you, did this timeline come in consultation with the consultants, or?
Yeah, this is the timeline that they generally presented at the September meeting. We have had some subsequent conversation with them about potentially compressing it. And you can imagine that that did come with a fair amount of reservation from the consultants based upon their experience. I think they've got approximately 15 to 18 referendums under their belt, so to speak, from an experience standpoint. So their main concern, if we were to accelerate this too much, is our ability to actually develop a quality, meaningful survey with the appropriate context behind it. Apparently, it's not as simple as, you know, basically copying and pasting the surveys they've used in other communities, which we would hope we're not paying for something like that either. We want, right? We want to personalize to our own community and our own situation. And in conversation with them, that does take time to develop that sort of information. Some of the other points that they brought up is, you know, if we, as a community, decide to go to a referendum prior to the April referendum, then could there be confusion on the part of voters that the council just approved a referendum to happen in, say, March or early April? There's now an election that takes place, but there's no referendum on that.
What referendum are you talking about?
If you were to pass, if you were to vote in, say, the end of March or early April, to go to referendum in advance of the April election. But the referendum wouldn't be until August, right? Does that create confusion for the voter?
No.
So...
Yeah.
And then, from an outreach perspective, from my understanding in conversation with them, you have to find the right balance of when is the appropriate time to begin that outreach. If it's too long in advance, the messages get lost, right? You have to have it in a concise window with structured events happening within that window, multiple ways to reach the voters. And if you vote on a question perhaps in March or early April, are we unnecessarily extending that window? And if you do choose not to extend the window for the outreach, then you have a dead period there. And what information is going to be conveyed to the voter at that point in time in that dead period? So it's really a delicate balance to kind of walk. And in all the communications we've had with people, nine to 12 months has been the recommended timeline to utilize for referendum planning. I know Middleton put it together in approximately five months or so last year. And the feedback I got from Middleton is that was way too fast, way too hard, and would not recommend it. So could it be done to accelerate the timeline? Yes. I mean, the consulting is willing to do it if they need to. But there's reservation, both, I think, from not only the consultant, but I think staff as well. I think that the burden, the challenge for staff is to make sure that we are meeting all of the tight deadlines than that Mueller would have for us in order to meet their deadlines. Can we do it? Sure. But that does mean that there are things that are going to have to be put on the back burner in order to accomplish some of the timelines.
Well, it doesn't seem like what Julia is asking for, even what I'm asking for, are accelerating the timeline. Because we're still shooting for a referendum in August. I think we're just talking about when is the council going to take specific action?
Correct. And I'm not misinterpreting that. We're all still working off an August timeline. But what I'm not doing a good job of conveying is that even if you stay on that August referendum date, if you vote in late March or early April, you're creating a dead zone. Because Mueller's recommendation is you don't do outreach too far in advance because the messaging gets lost. So you create a dead zone there where what information is available to the public during that dead period, so to speak.
Well, if they're saying, though, that referendum education is happening from May through August, then a vote in April doesn't seem like it's really screwing with that.
Certainly not the end of April. No, I agree.
It sounds like, man, it sounds like the vote is sort of a public kickoff of the education campaign, is what my guess is. Like, that's a newsworthy thing. The council voted to put a referendum on the August ballot. I imagine that that's how the news cycle has gone for them.
That's a great way to describe it. Because from Mueller's perspective, we need to be prepared once the yes vote comes out, right? To say, the yes vote is happening, here's what you can expect. You know, the Phase 3 begins.
It's like, we are approving Phase 3. This is what we're doing.
Right.
That's it. So this is what I, when you talk about dead zone, I don't understand because it's only one month. And I think the more time we have to educate the people, the better. You know, one meeting, one monthly meeting that we can have in April, start the process, kickoff, meeting, and then we have more meeting in June, May, June, and July. Because August is practically, it's two weeks, you know what I mean? So, you know what I mean? So the dead zone is only one month. So I, you know...
Well, again, I think if we're talking the second meeting in April, I don't think I have as much concern over the timeline as if we're talking the first meeting in April. Because then you're looking at, I think we've seen it in a few different projects in the city just this year. There's a sometimes insatiable desire for information out there regarding things. And I'm concerned that if the council were to vote in late March or early April for a referendum, and there isn't adequate information available to be provided to the public, to staff, to elected officials, then misinformation gets out there, rumors start. Maybe, you know, too many questions start coming in, and there's not accurate information that's available to be distributed.
Well, here's the problem, though. April 9th is the election. That's our council meeting night. And we, April 23rd is the first meeting of the new council. And by our own ordinances, we can't take any, we can only deal with routine business at that meeting. So I would argue, and I think most people would agree, that a referendum to raise taxes is not routine business. That's something special. So I think either we take the vote on April 9th, or it gets bumped into May. And if it gets bumped into May, we're looking at May 14th or May 28th. And again, May 14th, we could be potentially having half a new council with people who have not been involved in this process up till now. So I agree that that vote should be done on April 9th. That's when I think we should have it. Go ahead.
I mean, I understand what you're saying from a timing perspective, but from a newsworthiness perspective, I mean, that's the, not all the election, but it's the presidential primary. And, I mean, I guess maybe this, anyway. There's a lot going on at that period of time. And I mean, I'll reiterate what I said before. I think the newsworthiness of a vote happening makes sense as like a, as a hook to get the news to cover it. But, I don't know. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I also, I think there's an argument that I hadn't considered about keeping it to May. But I know what you also mean about wanting this council.
But I think it's not fair for, you know, to put this burden in, this is what I firmly believe, in people that they have not been, what happened to those people now? We invest all this time, and suddenly, because they were not involved, they say, you know what? We are going to abstain. We haven't been, so we are not going to vote. And we don't have a vote. And all this time that we waste, and all the money, is going to the drain. So I am thinking about that. Because it could be a possibility that those people come and say, hey, we don't know anything about that. We abstain.
Or a new council, I mean, whether or not it's feasible, could potentially come in and vote to undo what had been done.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, that's, that would be an extraordinary...
I agree. Is it likely? Probably not, but it is a feasible possibility.
No, but it's all, I mean, that would take a, that would be quite a, that would be quite an undertaking for a new council, for a new council member to want to sponsor a resolution to do that. That would be, that would be something.
What do you think?
Welcome to the world of City Council.
Yeah, Bill?
Is a special council meeting an idea that we can entertain?
Yes.
Yeah, the council can always entertain a special council meeting.
So when would you suggest for that to happen?
Maybe the week of April 15th? That, you know, split the difference there?
So we'd have to look at when we have our organizational meeting in there and get that all squared away. I mean, would the council consider the May 7th as a special meeting?
Well, again, that's going to be the new council, then.
Yeah. I recognize that. I mean, I think we also have to look at what's the perception to the public as well? If we're trying to, if, do they perceive that we're trying to force a vote?
No.
Before the council moves on? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that would be, that would be my concern. Because the organizational meeting is usually, is usually, well, it used to be the week of that Plan Commission meeting, but we don't have two Plan Commission meetings in a month anymore. So... So the organizational meeting is probably going to be on that third Tuesday. And I think calling a special meeting of the old council to vote on this right before the organizational meeting of the new council looks bad. I think that looks really bad. I think that would be worse than doing it on the 9th.
Got a question or comment?
Jim?
You move it up. The only thing you got to worry about is that in other projects, we have, when we survey residents, we have waited a couple of months to do stuff, because it was still important to get everybody's voices. So I think right now, you know, if we did that in the past, and all of a sudden now we're going, because we wanted to make sure everyone had a voice. Now, if we're going to start moving this up, we're going to have to be very aggressive on the messaging, because we have low-income people who's going to be in apartments, and that rent's going to probably go up, because it's going to be passed on, whatever we do here. So the only thing I'm saying is that if we're going to move it up, we're going to have to really get aggressive about getting the message out.
Well, I think the only thing we're talking about moving up right now is voting on the wording of the referendum that we're going to send to the county. The, the June 5th deadline is kind of what's driving this discussion right now, because that's, that's a deadline we can't do anything about. So, I, I, the question is, are we, are, does this group want to vote on the wording of the referendum question, or do we want to pass it on to whoever in the new council is? And that's where I'm, that's why I'm concerned, because we seat a new council on April... Well, I, when, when do they, when, when does the new council actually take office? I'd have to, I'd have to look up the statute.
Well, we can take a look, but I believe last year, we would have had the organizational meeting on the third Tuesday. So in this case, it'd be April 16th. The last council meeting for this council will be April 9th.
Right.
And then the organizational meeting would likely be April 16th, and then the first meeting of the new council would be the 23rd.
So when, the, the question, though, is when does that council actually take effect? Because you have the election on the 9th, and then the Board of Canvassers has to meet and certify the election. I think that usually happens on Monday.
We'll pull up the ordinances and see if we can capture that information.
Well, that's probably statutory. That's probably in, in Wisconsin state statutes.
While we're waiting, do you want a question to distract you, Chad?
Yeah, go for it.
All right. So in all of the presentation that you've done tonight, no mention was made of the fact that paying off a $35 to $44 million police facility over the course of 20 years is going to require a payment of $2 to $3 million each year. That figure does not show up here. Tell me why.
So, we do have that cost, some costs factored into the annual operating costs, and I would have to pose that question to Misty as far as how we can fully identify that cost and answer that question for you. So we'll jot that question down and get that back to you.
I think the answer to that question is that debt is excluded from the levy limit. So if we have to make debt payments, we have to make debt payments. And that allows, that allows us to increase taxes without going to a referendum in order to pay the debt.
Jay is correct that debt does not count towards our levy limit. And ordinance indicates that common council members assume their positions the third Tuesday in April.
Okay. So if we were going to try to do a special meeting, we would have to do it before the 16th. So that would be like Monday, the 15th, maybe?
Tax day.
What a great day. What a great day to vote on a referendum. Or we could do it on, you know, we could do it on maybe Thursday or Friday of election week, but I don't know.
I'm curious if the, from the resident perspective, if we're debating to this level of when we should have this vote, if maybe the right call is to keep it in May.
No. We can do like a test vote. Can we do that? Okay, how do you feel? It's up there. You know, to have a sense, who wants April, who wants May? That's it. It's a simple question. Yeah. So this is simple. Okay, Bill, April, May? Say it now.
I don't feel like it's fair to dump this on the next council, so I'll say April.
Okay. Gabriela?
I don't know. I guess I, I lean towards May, based on staff.
Okay.
While we're doing this, Dave and Joe, you want to chime in here?
May. I would say May as well.
What'd he say?
He said May.
May.
Yeah. And I, I would prefer April.
Running down the list here? May.
Sure.
I, I would say May, because Randy and I just had a little side conversation here. There's going to be a couple of people who are probably not going to want it so soon, and we're going to have to explain it, you know, why we're going to have it so early. And I think we're just shoving it down their throats.
We, we hear it all the time. You know, you didn't notify us. You didn't notify us. You didn't notify us, you know? And we, we hear that more and more, and I'm concerned.
But we have been talking about referendum for the last five months, so I don't know.
In March, everyone's going to be notified. Or hopefully, at the end of February, everyone's going to be notified, because that survey is going to be mailed out to everybody in the city. And on that survey, I presume that we will put the date on which the council will be voting on this. So it's not that everyone will be notified.
All right. I'm just saying, just saying.
I, I think you're missing my point, though, Jay. In previous issues, when there were surveys going out, it was always that we got to make sure that everyone has a voice. And we took month, two months, or whatever, because we wanted everybody to get a voice. And the only thing I'm saying, if we're going to be consistent, we want everybody to get a voice, the only thing I'm saying is that we have to be very aggressive in messaging.
Right.
We shouldn't have two different systems here, you know?
Well, there's not two different systems. There's, we would send the, I hope, we would send the survey out in Mar, in February, and that adds to, you know, then there's questions about that, because we send a survey out, you have to give people time to get back. I presume we'll have an online component to that, as well as the, you know, whatever we send out. Are we sending, are we planning on sending out like something someone would actually fill out and send back in? Because then that would have to be tabulated.
Paper copies, I believe, are available. I'll need to confirm with the consultant. A mailer will go out to every single residential household, and I don't know if that will also include a paper copy, or how to obtain a paper copy.
Okay. So, but that's still, I mean, you have to leave that survey open for probably at least a month.
I, I would say we're looking maybe at about two to three weeks at this point in time, with the thought process that perhaps most people are going to, if they're going to fill it out, we need to incent them to do it right away, right? If you give too long of a time, it gets lost in the day-to-day shuffle.
Yeah.
So we're thinking probably two to three-week window.
So even if we do it at the end of the February, at the end of February, the survey's going to be open till the middle of March. And...
Yeah, that is...
It's going to take time to get all of that put together, and, yeah, I, it, yeah, the first meeting in April may be a little ambitious for having the council vote on a question, even with, even if we do back that up to February. Now that I'm thinking about this some more. So maybe we're looking at May 14th?
Oh, my, okay. I will compromise.
So what will, what, what we will have to do, for those of us who are not up for election, is we will have to make sure if there's a change in, in, in representatives, that we do a really strong outreach to them, so that they can be involved in this process, you know, whoever's running, whatever, however it plays out.
So, although, and what we can do, certainly from a staff perspective, if there are any new members that come into council, we can certainly make an effort to sit down with them, go through presentations such as this, identify and share the links to the committee of the whole meetings, any other meetings in which the referendum was discussed, and encourage them to take a, a look at those. And perhaps, if the council is seemingly leaning towards perhaps a May 14th vote, that maybe a presentation by Mueller at the April committee of the whole meeting on the survey results would also potentially be beneficial for those new members, if they're, you know, whoever they may be.
So, May 14th? All right. May 14th it is.
So we will, from a staff perspective, use May 14th as the anticipated time for a vote. Obviously, we do have a fallback date of May 28th, if necessary, and if, as other jester mentioned, special election could, or special, special meeting could also be an option as well, if need be. So we do appreciate the discussion on this, and that we'll, we have the direction that we need, and we'll work at, with May 14th as the target.
All right.
Well, if the healthy discussion was on the, on, on the timeline, let's transition to a dollar amount. What are, what are folks comfortable with?
Can you put, can you put that, the option where you have? No. The other one. That one.
That one?
Because this one is, we can, maybe, I don't know what is the, but maybe we can choose an option that we feel comfortable, and then we can decide the combination. You know what I mean?
Yep. That's, I think, if we look at, you know, an amount first, and kind of see where the comfort level lies, and then we can talk about what would be included in that, that amount.
I have another question on the, specifically on the cops. I looked through the 2024 budget, and under this, under the police section, it lists all of the FTEs, including half a dozen, that just say vacant. So are those already budgeted, and are those, are those salaries part of the 2024 budget?
Those are existing vacancies on the existing authorized staff, which is about 55.
Yeah, so they are still in there.
They are budgeted, so that obviously the department, as they continuously attempt to fill those and recruit for those positions, the funding is there for those.
Yeah.
But those are not the five cops grant positions.
Okay. So if we, if we do hire, though, the, the cops candidates would be the one, the first ones, right? And it's highly unlikely that we're going to get more than five, given recent history, right?
We're certainly, much like many law enforcement agencies, having some, some recruiting challenges.
Okay, so, all right. So I guess chances are, the additional $650, whatever thousand is, is already in the budget and, and taken care of, at least for the next year or so.
For the five cops positions?
For the five vacancies?
Right.
Or the five vacancies? Which are we talking about?
So, so if we fill a vacancy?
Yeah.
I mean, is that, do we have to fill the vacancies separate from the cops candidates?
So if we use, for, for simple math, from my, my perspective, let's just say we have five, five current vacancies that you referenced, and we have the five cops positions. So there's a total of 10, if, if there was a, a referendum that, you know, that the, the voting public supported those positions, that would create 10 positions, right? The department is already, those first five positions have been authorized over the years through the budget process. They are currently vacant. They have been budgeted for. The department has the ability to fill them at any time their hiring processes end, and they get candidates to fill those. The other five positions with the cops grant are not yet authorized by the council. All the council did last night was authorize acceptance of the grant and signal that they want those cops positions included in the referendum conversation, to determine if the voters approve the referendum, then the subsequent funding will be available for those positions moving on forever. So if the referendum passes in August, there would be a budget amendment that would come forward to fund those officers for the remainder of 2024, in order to comply with the grant timing. And then the remaining levy money would obviously kick in in '25, '06, and beyond. Does that help with the, with kind of putting it all together?
I think so. But, okay, so...
So there's not been $670,000 are not budgeted for the cops position currently?
Right.
If that was a question?
Right. So I guess my, my question is, let's, let's just say, let's back up a year. So January of '23.
Okay.
Let's say we've got those same five vacancies, and here we are at the end of the year, we still have those five vacancies. That would mean we would have an additional six, well, that $650,000 would roll over into the 2024 budget. It's money we didn't have to spend.
It will not, that does not, salary savings do not roll over, they do not carry over. Typically, they are placed into the, into the general fund, into the reserve.
Right. But it's, but it's money that we didn't have to spend, that we already have and just did not spend.
Correct.
So I guess...
But it does not carry over.
Okay.
Unless approved by council to carry over. I don't, I'm not familiar with any circumstances where there's been a request to carry over salary savings, unless it would be for a specific situation.
So in 2024, let's say we magically hire five new officers, and we say, yeah, these are our cops candidates, whatever. We, we would already have the funds available to pay their salaries, right? Because it's part of the 2024 budget.
Probably not, because we cannot supplant. So supplanting with grant funds means you're using the grant funds to cover existing cost. So I would be concerned that that would be supplanting if we were using already budgeted funds to cover those officers, because then the, the Department of Justice's position is as well, are you not going to fill those other five positions that you just used to fund these cops positions? That would be considered supplanting. So we need to authorize new money for those, those cops.
Yeah, so don't, don't think about the grant. Do this exercise without thinking that there is a grant, for now. So, so it would be easier.
And I'm happy to, to, to check further offline, if you want, Bill, to be honest with you. So just, just let me know.
All right. So to give you some, oh, Dave has a question. Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, Chad, how do you, how do you supplant someone that's not hired? I, I'm, you know, I'm in the same boat with Bill. It doesn't seem logical to me, you know? It's like government, government spending driving us over the cliff, you know? If, if we haven't hired them, how can we supplant them?
So we'll have to be actively trying to fill those positions, and if we are using those funds to fund the grant positions, then it would be impossible for us to fill those positions, because there would be no money available, because we used already budgeted money for those grant positions, and that would be considered supplanting.
Oh, open, oh, double dip?
Yeah, I think the purpose of the grant funds is to add positions, right?
Right.
That's the bottom line. We have to go, in this case, from 55 sworn to 60. That's the bottom line, and we have to be actively filling all the positions that we have available, and we have to be using, have the budgets available to fill those positions. Otherwise, it's the, we'll be in violation of the grant.
All right. So to, just to provide a little more, because the, I, I, this was something that Chad and I talked about yesterday, and then I made a few phone calls today. Most communities around us have somewhere in the area of 1.9 to 2 police officers per thousand. We're right now, with our, with our current staffing, we're sitting at just over 1.6. With the authorized staffing, the 55 officers that we have in the budget with the five vacancies, we're a little over 1.7, and the cops takes us up to a little over 1.8. So then the additional four police officers that the police department is asking for gets us under, it's still under two, but it's somewhere between 1.9 and two. I don't know what the exact Department of Administration count of our population is, but I was using 32,000 as the number, so whatever it is. If it's 34, then we're even lower than those numbers. So, but the, but the way we, as we approved the cops grant last night, that money wouldn't be available to us until September, right? be available to us until September, right? Depending on the outcome of the referendum.
The grant funds are actually available already. But yes, from a logical perspective related to the action and the process that we use, you're right, it's September, not until after we know if these positions would be approved via referendum.
Because it's a, it would be, if we, if we did just hire those positions now, first of all, there's no money in the budget for it because we can't use the existing five vacancies for that. Plus, it would be creating an unfunded mandate for next year, for 2025. 25? Well, yeah, '25, '26, and '27, but.
Can I ask, can I go?
Live it up.
Okay, so going back to this, the amount, you know what it will be nice also to have in this table? So what is the city portion of the tax? You know, because there is a confusion because people sometimes don't understand, they receive a $8,000 bill, but the city is one third of that, you know what I mean? So, so maybe we can add another, you know.
Well, these numbers, these numbers are 100% city numbers. This is one.
No, I know, but it, what is our, the portion, if we add that to the, the annual portion, you know what I mean? We've got three, so like we say, we're going with the option 25, we need to add $389 to what? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think what, maybe what would be nice to see up here is the percentage by which the, the total tax bill goes up. So.
Yeah, something like, yeah.
You know, if, if the city portion of the tax bill goes up 10%, then that's about 3% on their bill.
So if I'm understanding things correctly, using the average home value as an example, you would like to see what the current city portion of the tax bill is for that?
Well, I think, and the total tax bill.
And we can add the total tax bill as well. And then obviously you would be able to reference that it would be an additional $355 a year in that example.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Or any example on that particular row.
I think, I think this would be, yeah.
Okay.
But again, I think the percentage of the overall tax bill, you know, the percentage increase, that's, that's really what people, our taxpayers are going to be concerned about. My tax bill went up 5%. Well, that's because the city portion went up 15% or something like that, you know?
Yeah, if, and, and we will certainly add that to the table and we can send that out. If my recollection is any good and in my advancing age, I think it could be considered suspect. The average tax, or the tax, city portion of tax on a $381,000 house right now is right around $2,500, I believe.
Yeah, something like that.
So just as a point of reference, as it stands today, but we'll get the exact number in there so you guys have that. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the challenge with that is that there's three different school districts. So every, there are so many different tax bills, it's like almost impossible to keep track of.
So the idea is that they only look at the city because people can say, oh, you know what I mean?
But I do like the, the $20 per month or whatever because I think you, it just gives a concrete what you're getting for that amount of money. Like, it's, they're only talking about the increase, right? So I think it's really helpful.
Yeah, at one of our, at one of our previous meetings when we talked about this, we were talking about a three or $4 million referendum. But at that time, the stuff that we were including with the referendum was basically the Baker-Tilly study, the fire department staffing, and.
Transit.
Transit. We hadn't really considered the police, adding positions for the police department. That wasn't included in those numbers. We hadn't included the other positions that department heads have recommended in the budget and we hadn't included any of the BRT stuff, so.
And I don't, I don't think the operating costs for the police facility played a large role in those discussions either.
No, it didn't. So there's, you know, and there's, there's, we should have a, we should have a discussion about how much of this we can absorb just, you know, because the tax base grows, hopefully, and, and we have new construction.
Yeah.
And, you know, stuff moves on because we don't necessarily, we don't necessarily have to do all of this in a referendum, but I think the referendum is going to be more than $2 or $3 million. I just, you know, it's, again, it's a big bite. I mean, we're basically looking at increasing our annual operating budget by about 30%, which is a lot. So, but it's also stuff that we've needed because we've been, you know, each year we fall behind her and behind her and behind her and now we're, now we're in the situation that we're in where the economy's not growing at the rate it was and we're not seeing construction happening like it was.
Can I go?
Yeah.
So, so I think that we need to, for me, if I'm gonna, you know, be behind this referendum, it's got, it had to be, we need to allocate money to, you know, to consider all the needs of the city hall, you know what I mean? Not only public safety, but also we have other staffing issue inside this building, okay? I will feel more comfortable if I, you know, we add some of those positions too. Also, I know that we didn't discuss the police facility, but, you know, it's something that we need to consider. If we are not included this, in the police facility in the referendum, we need to look for other fees because we need to pay this almost $600,000. To be honest, I don't know from where we are going to get that money. So I think we need to consider that. I don't know if people don't feel comfortable putting in the referendum, it's fine, but we need to look like Gabriela mentioned, impact fee or other type of, I don't know, we can do that.
So the impact fee would apply only to new developments, obviously.
Yeah, but this is qualified for new development.
Yeah, I think we can make a connection there that there, you know, the new development is driving, you know, the need for additional staff and therefore more space. But again, just recognizing that, you know, particularly with where the economy could be trending, you know, we don't know what exactly that impact fee will amount to.
Chad, we increased 4,000 people in three years, you know what I mean? So.
Sure, and 1,500 of that was due to, to the attachment.
Yeah, so, you know what I mean? So.
I always thought too that it would be, that would pay down the debt for the building because ultimately we don't know exactly how much money is coming in each year. But over the course of the fire department impact fees, it was something like $2 million came in.
Yeah, I'd have to confirm with Misty.
Certainly, I mean, that, obviously that's a small portion of it, but it's still significant.
So I, I think we, I think we have the, you know, the cost that said, yeah, this one is, we are, we are building a new police station, this is why we're telling people because we are growing.
Well, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing from council, is clearly that you'd like staff to prepare some, some information, further information on the impact fee related to the police facilities, that a general consensus?
I think the, the impact fee goes toward the capital expenditures though, right?
Correct.
And this referendum is dealing with operating expenditures. So while I support the idea of looking at an impact fee, we're looking at two different sections of the budget. Jim?
It's adding new discussions with the vendor. Is there like a sweet spot for when you're asking for too many employees?
Well, I think that's where the survey is going to be important and I think that that's why collecting that information from our community, because there are a variety of, of potential considerations as it relates to the dollar amount and what's within that dollar amount. I think ideally there's going to be useful information for the council to consider in the survey. You know, does it identify clear and convincingly, you know, what is the threshold of, of additional referendum dollars that they will support? Are there positions or initiatives or things that, that they will support over others? You know, so I think that because of where we're at right now with, with a lot of needs and it really a challenge to try to, to hone in on where, where we want to concentrate our efforts. Personally speaking, and this is just me, I'm, I think the, the survey results could be quite useful, you know, depending upon the, the response rate and then what the results are. Because again, as we continue to dig down deeper into the options here after tonight, you know, it's still going to kind of have a pending status to it because I think we're going to want to, as a, you're going to want as a council, still take into consideration what those survey results are and will that suggest maybe there's a pivot made or something added or whatever the case may be.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
But what you need tonight is we, we need to give you like where we are, you know, if we are in option, you know, 25 or 30, okay, whatever.
It would be helpful, yeah.
Because you need to have the amount in order to draft a question for the survey because the survey we're going to say, you know, and then we need to determine if we decided supposed to go through $3.5 million. So we say 500,000 for transit, okay? We have three, we have this, you know, suppose that we don't do anything for the police, you know, facility. So we have $3 million for staffing. Or we can say we allocate 500,000 for the police facility and we have 2.5 million for staffing. And that is staffing, then we determine, okay, what is that combination of staffing? You know, for sure, we need to have this five cop, you know, because we have the grant for minimum five. And then we go to the fire department, there is another priority, the fire department. So we decided how many? Six? Okay. So we have public safety. And then we have another million dollar for some of the other additional position. This is how we see it. It's very easy, but we need to determine if we are, we need to know which level you are comfortable and then we need to know now so then we can start going to step two to the combination. So I don't know how you feel about this, but.
Well, I, I don't necessarily like this approach of picking a dollar amount and then figuring out how to fill it up. I think, I, I mean, for me, as someone who runs a business, I figure out what I need and then find a way to pay for it. So I think, I, can you go back to that page that had all the additional positions on it?
Oh my God.
Yeah, that one. So, so I think, I think we need to go through that list and figure out what things, because the, no matter how this plays out, the, the bulk of this referendum is going to be staffing positions. And by that I don't mean 60%, I mean probably in the area of 90% of what we're going to be paying for is going to be positions. So I think the question is not do we pick an arbitrary number and say we're going to fall within that number, but which of these positions do we think we need the most? And it may be that we need all of them. I mean, you know, I look at that, I look at that list and maybe there's two positions on there that I would say, let's not include in the referendum, but, you know, the impact of removing two positions is pretty minimal. And the thing is, when we do, when we do this referendum, we're not going to want to have to come back and do this again in five or six years. We're going to want to do this once and maybe, hopefully, things go for 10 years before we have to do this again, or maybe we never have to do this again. Maybe the legislature grows some common sense between now and then, who knows? Gabrielle?
Yeah, one of the things that I, I feel like in terms of my perspective from being on the council for four years is that, you know, we face these tight budgets and we've been able to keep taxes about the same over the course of that year, but that's kind of by the skin of our teeth, right? Because we had crazy net new construction that's higher than anywhere in the, in the state.
That's part of it and then two TID closures.
And the TID closures, okay. So we've, but, so we're in this situation where, and we only made it through this budget cycle because of the, the state aid, which we didn't anticipate. So until, you know, we, I don't think anybody saw that last year. So, you know, we would have been in a real crisis this year and like looking at layoffs had we not had that state aid come through. So my question is like, so I have this perception of the fact that we can make it work every year, but my, my, my understanding from based on what staff has told me that next year, that's when we were going to face like a crisis where we're like, we're not going to be able to maintain all of our positions, we're going to have to start cutting services. So I guess the, the thing I'm trying to remember is that I kind of do feel like over time you can just add these positions, right? Because we've been able to do that over the past, but I think that intuition is wrong because of what we face. So that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around as well because, you know, obviously it'd be great to add all these positions, but I like to think, let's add a certain number of them next year in one fell swoop with the referendum and then we continue to chip away at that with increases over the, but I don't know if that's possible. You know, do you not understand what I'm getting at? I don't.
Yeah, I think I do, yeah.
Yeah, I, so I, and maybe, I don't know if there's even an answer to that question, but I just like, I feel, based on my experience, like we're going to be able to chip away at this list, but I think what I'm being told is that, that might not be the case. So we need the referendum and therefore it's like, this might be, this increase might be what we have for the next 10 years. I don't know.
Yeah, what I can say from it, from at least a historical perspective, as I've seen it with my 20 plus years with the city and granted, I haven't been deeply involved in the budget development throughout that entire time. But for most years, you would see perhaps one to maybe three positions added in a, in a good year, citywide. The last couple of years, three years in particular, have been quite unique because we've closed two large TIDS in back-to-back years, as well as had the additional increase in shared revenue come in this year. So we've had, you know, approximately, you know, this is just estimates here, but, you know, an additional 500 to $800,000 in additional levy capacity each of the last three budgets because of those things happening. The next TID is not anticipated to close until early 2030s. So we are not going to see a levy limit adjustment from a TID district again for another, you know, seven to 10 years. And we already know what our increase in shared revenue is going to be next year, it's about $24,000. So that puts us right back in the same position where we're reliant on net new construction. And I think, I think it's safe to say that things are slowing. There are some projects that we know are not happening that were planned before the, some inflationary and interest rate pressures. We had, I think, was it, was it, was our net new this year, right around three, 2.8? Yeah, you know, will we hit 2.7 next year? I don't know. I don't know. It could be a lofty goal, but, you know, if you just look at a 3% inflationary estimate every year, I mean, you pretty much need a 3% net new construction just to meet status quo. So, I mean, these are all considerations that do make the budget development quite challenging every year and we've had, had it a bit easier than, than normal the last three years because of a few different factors.
Yeah, I do think the legislature should pay attention to that because, you know, we, we've been saying for years, ever, actually ever since the levy limit was enacted, that, that relying on infinite new construction, which is what the levy limit does, is just dumb. You can't, you can't function that way because, you know, net new construction is going to change from year to year. And there's not always, there's not always a fallback for that because, you know, what else are you going to do? The fact that they tied it to net new construction, you know, I understand, I understand why they did it, but I don't understand why they did it. Because it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense in the long run. And it also creates problems for some communities that may be focusing on redevelopment projects because then the net new construction is based on the existing cost, the existing valuation. So if you have to do, if you have to do a demolition, if you have to do all kinds of other things, it doesn't, you don't get the full value. So it seems like there was, there was a motivation involved that, that didn't make any sense. They were, the, the idea was to try to control, from a legislative standpoint, how high property taxes would go. And I get that, I mean, they were, they were feeling pressure from voters, but regardless of that, you have to do something sensible. You can't just throw something out there and, and make it stick and then have us have to be sitting here going through this process. Because I'll tell you, if this, if this, if we move forward with this referendum as we're doing and this referendum does not pass, I don't know what we're going to do. I have no idea what we're going to do. We're going to sit here during the budget next year and we're going to be looking at cutting maybe eight or 10 positions. Jim?
What the states don't, I think we've got to put that aside. What I'm more concerned about is what are we going to, what positions are we going to ask for? Because it's going to have to be a great explanation of why we want those. Because it's going to have to be a great explanation of why we want those positions.
Right.
And, I mean, I'm looking at the list. I don't know. I mean, I think we need to start discussing, what are we going to ask for? What personnel we're going to ask for?
Yeah.
You know, it's like now.
That was, that was part of the, I think we need to do that, I think we need to do that in December. I think in December, we need to finalize. So the next thing I was going to ask you for, Chad, is, and I know it's somewhere buried in the budget documents, but I think for all of these positions, we need to have a detailed explanation of why these positions are being requested.
Yeah, we can send the link from the budget docs, because all of these positions had a request form filled out for them in the budget process. So we can send you the requisite section there.
But that's 600-plus pages, so.
Yeah, like I said, we'll identify where they are and send just that section.
The other thing that I would like to do, and you and I talked about this the other day, when we send the survey out, and it may be impractical given the amount of stuff we're going to ask for, but I think we should have those written explanations in the survey that we send out. If, because there are some people who aren't going to have internet access and whatnot. So we, we can have a link online, but there's got to be a way for people who don't have online access to get a hold of this information.
Yeah, and that's one of the considerations that the consultant, you know, really tried to drive home when we were talking timeline earlier, is the context in the survey is important.
Right. So that's, that's why we're going to have to come up with something, I think, in December. We're going to have to make decisions.
We don't have a meeting in December. This is our meeting.
We're going to have to have one.
No. We decided this is our last council committee of the call for the year.
Well, I think it would, it definitely would be helpful to have some direction. I mean, we don't have to finalize positions, you know, but we do, we definitely could use discretion or direction on where we're trending from an amount and what you're thinking, you know, from a position standpoint. And, you know, whether, you know, you use the approach of this is the amount and, and we work our way back based on priority, or we work our way up based on priority, they're one in the same in a lot of regards, right? So we just need to, we do need to start honing some of that down. And quite honestly, the sooner we start honing it down, the sooner we can get it off to the consultant as well.
Well, I, and I, I'll get you in a minute. I don't think we've got enough information tonight to go through that list of positions and pick and choose what we want to fund.
And that's fair. I don't think we have to get that deep, because we're talking about trying to start honing.
Right. Because if they're going to be putting together, if they're going to be putting together a survey that we would like to go out at the end of February, beginning of March, that's not a lot of time between now and then. So, and I don't, I don't know how we hash through that, but I think we do, I think we are going to need another meeting in December. So, because somehow we've got to be able to, to, to start, the document, the documents that's going to have to be put together for the survey is going to have to be fairly detailed, because if we're asking people for this amount of money, they're, they're going to want more than just, you know, we want this, we want this, we want this, and, you know, two or three sentences of justification. They're going to want to know why. And so I would expect to see like, let's say, the receptionist. When is the last time we added a receptionist to the front desk? As an example, I, that's the kind of information I, as a voter, would be looking to see, you know, how many of these people do we have? Why do we feel there's a need to add that position? So we're, I'm probably looking for a little more information than what, just what's in the budget sheets. But I think that's what we have to communicate to the voters. Gabriella?
You know, I'm, I think getting too detailed is also kind of risky, because I, like, having position descriptions, that's part of the public packet, I think is way, way too detailed, because that's, but I think you can be, you can say things like communications director, I think we've all talked about the importance of that. You complain about communications being inadequate. We can do better if we had this position. HR, you know, we have difficulty hiring our police officers. We need more HR support so that we can actually hire the staff that we have budgeted. You know, you all like have issues with public works, you know, you see the streets, the issues with the streets, so the street technician. Like, I think there's more generic descriptions of what we need across the city. And so in terms of, obviously, it'd be better to just pick and choose the positions and say, we're going to dedicate to this. But I think there is some value in just saying, I think we could, a $3 million referendum, or whatever it is, seems like it's possible to, to pitch to the voters and then say, here's what we could get for that. We could get a little bit of HR, we can get leadership and, and some police officers in police department, we can get leadership and firefighters in the fire department, we can get some public works, we can get a little bit of transit. Like, I think we do sort of, because we can't do 8.6 million, that's absurd. So that's, you know, ridiculous. But maybe we can do 3 million and like, and then here's a picture of what we could do. But I think if we get too specific, it's almost too much. But I do believe that we should, we should spread it across the city because it's an, it's an ecosystem that relies on each other. But, and obviously, we can have that detailed information available on the website for the people that really want to dig in, the eight people aside from us that are going to read those things, that's great. They should have that availability, but I think we need to be a little bit more generic, and we can be generic while, while aiming for a target number.
If I may offer just what I'm hearing now, I mean, we can potentially kind of shift how we were conversing this, but I, you know, I heard Alder Udell give an acknowledgement to what you just said as far as, you know, maybe it's $3 million. And I'm not speaking for you in dollar amount, but more importantly, on where we were talking about when you were mentioning maybe some police positions, maybe some fire positions, maybe some other positions within the city, much like the mayor mentioned here. So if that's, if that's the direction that the council is starting to, to come in, okay, it seems as though you want to spread positions around both public safety and non-public safety. So we as staff can now begin to use that information and say, okay, well, here's some examples of how you could break this down. Here's, you know, seven positions in the police department, here's seven positions in the fire department, here's seven positions in, in general government, as an example, you know? So I think, I think this is helpful conversation for staff and is beginning to kind of get, get to the heart of what we need here. And I, I still am obviously sensing a desire to, to keep transit on the table.
And, and what I'm just going to respond to is that, what you said, Gabriella, about the communications person? I, I think we've got to kind of predict a little from our experiences of what the community may want also. Because that resonates with people when you say communication person. I mean, some of the things up there, like if you said a permit technician, I think people would be like, okay.
This is why we cannot be so granular, because the people don't, they don't know. We know what we need. You know, we, we have an idea where the city, they, you know, they staff, Chad and Adam, they are, you know, practically running city hall. They know what are the internal needs, that some of them, they are there, you know what I mean? But we cannot ask the resident, pick and choose, because they don't know. You know, what we can say is, this is our position that we know that we need. Here we are, you know?
I, I get what you're saying, but I'm just saying, I think we've got to think of it as what the public is going to understand.
Oh, yeah, okay.
True. That's where, that's where I'm going with that.
This is where I was headed with my comments earlier. I don't think we need to include a position description for every one of these positions, because people know what a police officer does. I think they need to know, I think they need to know things like, why is, like, why is the city asking, the example I gave, why is the city asking for another receptionist? I know why. But, and, and I don't need to tell the residents what a receptionist does in order to explain to them that, you know, we've had, we haven't added anybody in, at the front desk for a long time, and the requests keep coming in, and there's just not enough bodies to get it all done. I, you know, I, I know why we need a mechanic, all right? But that's not going to be readily apparent to most of the residents, and they know what a mechanic does, and we don't need a position description for that. We just need to say, hey, you know, our city fleet, because the city's grown, our city fleet has grown by X number of vehicles, so, and the current staffing that we have can't take care of them all. I mean, so I, I think what I'm asking for is that, that should go out in that mailing is, is not, it's, I'm not asking for an enormous amount of detail, but I think we need to have, we need to have some, some clarity as to why...
But this is what Mueller Communication is going to do for us.
Well, and that's great, but we still have to make the decisions. Mueller isn't going to go through that list and pick and choose.
Yeah, but we, this is my question. We are nine people here, and the permutation and the probability that each of us is going to select this list is going to be mathematically impossible to everyone is going to compromise to do something like that, because we are nine of us. And you multiply by all the choices that we have. So I think we need to determine, because we don't have too much time to think too granular, we need to determine, okay, what, they, they need to know what is the amount that we feel comfortable, and they needed, they needed that. Tonight, we have to provide some guidance. And for that, we can tell them, we want transit, we want police, fire, and admin, you know, non-civilian people here. That's it. And then they can say, we can, you know, we can talk now and say, what are those civilian positions that we want to see? We have needs in communication, we have need in the finance department, we have some need in HR, you know, I don't know. But I think the, the system that I, I mentioned before is, is what are the amount that we feel comfortable? And from there, we start going down. And then if we say we want $500,000 for transportation, so we already have $2.5 million to play with the position. We say, we, we need to decide that we are going to add money for the police facility or not. We need to decide it tonight if we are going to add it or not. If we are adding, say, how much? 300,000, 500? And then we have $2 million for position. And then we say we need X amount of police, X amount of fire, and the rest are civilians. That's it. And then we choose which are the, the department that we need, some immediate needs that we need to, and then we have the, but they need to leave tonight with more specific guidance.
Well, Chad has told us that he felt he got some specific guidance, but I...
You need a, you need a man of mouth.
It would be helpful. I mean, we can obviously use where we're at. And of course, whatever decisions are made tonight aren't binding by the council, right? I mean, you can still make adjustments moving forward based on community survey, based on additional information that comes through from us. But in order to continue to, again, hone this down, we do need some direction. We've gotten some, again, clear that there's, we want to spread the positions around to a certain extent, at least that's the impression I'm getting. I'm seeing heads nod. Transit clearly still seems to be on the table. And, you know, we haven't really heard whether or not police facility operating expenses, you want to continue to stay on the, on the table and in the front burner, or if you want those still, you know, or if you want those sitting on the, the back burner at this point. So...
Well, the, so I've been involved, I've been doing government stuff for a long time. And one of the things that concerns me is, and again, I realize the balancing act here, but we, we as elected officials often think in short term, we try to solve long-term problems with short-term solutions. So we have this list of positions up here, and let's say we decide, we decide to move forward with a referendum that funds half of them. We still have another half, which is another $4 million a year. No, I understand, but I'm just, we're just spitballing here, because if we want to go with a three or a $4 million referendum, we still have a lot of other things that have to be done. And the question is, how will we get those done in the long term? The, the only other option that I see for us is to do another referendum sometime, maybe five, six years down the road. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's the direction that we should be heading. So, so that's why I, I think we need a little more detail about all of these positions before we start picking and choosing. Because, I mean, you know, the HR need isn't, isn't going to go away. Police department evidence specialist, that's not going to go away. A detective isn't going to go away. You know, a permit technician, I mean, a lot of us, we don't know what that is. I mean, I can guess what that is, but, you know, I don't know specifically what that is, but I know what a street maintenance worker is. And the thing is, these are all things that have been, these are all things that have been identified by our department heads as needs they have. So as we're picking and choosing, assuming that the budget situation isn't going to get any better, that maybe we're only going to be sitting at the two, two and a half or 3% growth for several years, we're not going to be able to add very many positions. So what do we do about all the other ones that we think we need? Do we want to, do we want to set up the dominoes to have to go back for a referendum in five or six or seven years? Gabriella?
A couple of things. I, I think the police facility operating costs have to be part of the picture. It's such a huge hit to our operating budget that I, I think we cannot avoid talking about that. I also, one thing that has not been identified in the study and isn't listed here, but that was mentioned at the, by, I think Ned Hartwork last night was a full-time social worker for the police department. I think that's an interesting position that would appeal to a lot of people and sounds like is a desire from the police department's perspective as well, that I think could be interesting in terms of telling a story about what the, what the city could, because it's really a story about what the city could be if we had more funding and what we could do for the city that we're not able to do right now. And then also the story of, we may be facing cuts if we don't take action.
I want to, I want to, I want to clarify that, Gabriella, because you had mentioned that we are going to cut position, like, no. If we don't have the, if the referendum does a buzz, it means that we are not going to be able to add new positions.
So we, we think that we're confident that we can maintain the...
I think this is the issue. We are not going to be able to add any new position in the following, you know, budget.
But we're at that, we're, I mean, I'm glad that that's the case.
I don't want you to scare people and say we are going to cut position because...
Yeah, I mean, we haven't done that assessment yet. I mean, and of course, every budget has to be put together with the facts and information that comes in throughout that budget process. So if, you know, if we get to a point next year and, and the council has elected to go to a referendum and that ultimately fails in August, then we'll be looking at, at the overall budget picture and saying, okay, our net new construction was 1.2%, that means we can raise the levy $300,000. Well, that may mean there's no cost of living adjustment. That may mean we have to change benefits. That may mean we have to cut services. That may mean we have to, to reduce workforce. You know, we, we'd have to assess all the options. The council may then decide, you know what, if the referendum fails, then we need to implement a wheel tax for, as an example. Or other revenue increasing sources in order to, to maintain existing services or, you know, potentially use those, those sources of revenue to, to enhance or allow continued addition of staff, for instance, so...
Your point is well taken.
Yeah, we just don't know at this point. And JT, your, your, your conversation here about, you know, trying to, you know, talk about specific positions, I think having the information that we have from council right now that you want to, again, I don't want to put words in everybody's mouth, but that it appears as though that the consensus is a balanced look across public safety and non-public safety. We can go back as a work group and also converse with our department heads and begin to prioritize, knowing that this is unlikely, that the council is going to look at $8.6 million. Where are your top five to 10 priorities? Where do they lie? And then we can obviously begin to build those priorities into a number that the council might be comfortable with. I would prefer a number because it would be helpful.
No, because this was, I think you need to have, because otherwise, you can go and if you don't have the number, then you can put everything on the table.
I mean, we can still talk in generalities, right? I can say, okay, well, if we do 10 positions in police, 10 in fire, and 10 in general government, and transit, this is what it's going to cost. If we do five in each, and this, we do transit, this is what it's going to cost. But I don't think that gets us where we want to be quite yet.
So I think the question is that maybe we should ask, do another informal polling and say, how do we, where are our, how do we feel comfortable? $3 million, $4 million? So at least they have an idea.
Can we look at that list with the options that has the per month for the abertome?
And if you want to, I can certainly flip, we had a $5 and a $10, or 15, roughly. You can at least see the amounts as what, you know, for instance, the third column, the cops with Baker Tilly as an example, was, was about... the third column, the cops with Baker Tilly as an example, was, was about $15 a month.
Okay. What do you think council about? Do you feel com, to make, to say something? Like, where you feel comfortable here? I, I, you know, I think we.
From a very personal perspective, if I had $25 per year more on my tax bill and we were able to accomplish that, that, what I imagine we can accomplish with that, that personally feels good to me. Obviously, I know that that's not true for everybody, but that in my head is good. I don't know if that's true for everybody in terms of how they're thinking about it.
So you feel comfortable with option 25?
From a personal perspective, yes.
Yeah.
My personal tax law, I would be very happy to pay that. I think it sounds like a good deal for what we could potentially get for that.
I would, I would agree with you, Gabriella. I think when you start getting up to like $500 a year or something, I, I don't know, just from people I have talked to already, talking about referendum, I think you're pushing it a little bit. So I'm with you. I mean, if we're voting, I vote with Gabriella.
25? Option 25?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, you have two options, 25. Okay.
25 or option 30, but since the general consensus seems to be 25 at this point.
Okay.
Well, I'd go with the 30.
Okay, you 30.
25 or 30.
25, 30? Everyone feel comfortable, 25, 30?
I'll, I'll just point out that I, I have the receipts here I could pull up, but I, when I sent my number to Chad, it was $3.5 million, and that corresponds to $25 a month.
Okay. And Joe?
Oh, okay.
One more point. I had gone back through all the budgets back to 2004, and I plotted the taxes on the median home in Pittsburgh, and then I adjusted for inflation.
Okay.
And right now, so the, the high point was 2017 through 2020, and, and '21, '22, and '23 have all gone down in, in, in actual purchasing power. And the last time we saw taxes lower than what they currently are this year, or 2024 for that matter, because it's roughly the same, is before the library existed.
Yeah, I know.
So, I mean, just to get back to the 2017 to 2020 era of, of property taxes, that would be about an additional $450 per year.
Bill, I would love to have that information sent to us. I'm sure Misty has it, but I think that it, it would be good for her to take a look at that and confirm because this would be very helpful information that would be included in the outreach in Phase 3 with Mueller, right? You know, to be able to demonstrate the last 10 to 15 years of what the tax impact has been and highlight some of the very points you brought up. So, kudos to you. Thank you for, for providing and doing the analysis on that. And if you don't mind sharing, it'd be great.
Sure.
Can you share?
What's, what's the, like, so this is just sitting in my, in my city SharePoint. If I, am I allowed to share that with everyone, or do I need to, like, take a snapshot and email it? Are there rules about sharing versus?
Do you have it in a, in a, either a PDF or a doc, a doc form, Excel spreadsheet or anything?
It's an Excel spreadsheet, yeah.
If you just send the Excel spreadsheet as a, as an attached file, that'd be fine.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to ask Joe.
Yes, we do need to ask Joe. I'll say 30 a month would be fine.
So you have.
So we can look at 25 and 30?
30, yeah.
That's perfect. One, one or two options gave us a range. I appreciate it.
I'd look at 40 also because that gets us closer to Bill's number.
Bill, was it, didn't you say 25?
I had said $3.5 million, which corresponds to 25.
Right.
But the analysis with the inflation-adjusted taxes, I think, is what Jay is talking about.
So 25, 30, and an option on 40.
Yeah, 40 is like pushing the envelope.
So did we have a roughly $40? Yeah, we do have, so that'd be about $5.5 million is what you'd be looking at with a $40.
Oh.
So you can see that far right column has, has an approximate 40.
But go to the other, go to the other.
This one?
The other, that one. Where is your?
So option 20, 25 and 30.
But then you have 50 a month, and you have 7 million.
Well, it goes from 30 to 45. We skipped 40.
Yeah, we did skip 40 because that's right here on this page.
You 30, you have 38, and then.
On the far right column is about $38, $40 a month.
Yeah.
Which would be 5.5 million.
Okay. Okay.
So 25, 30, and 40? Or is that two?
The 35 here is 5 million, but the, can you go to the other one? I am confused now. So we have, option is four, ah, four. Ah, because we don't have the five there. Yeah, okay. It's confusing.
There's a lot of numbers.
Yeah, but I, okay, so option 25, 30, most of the council feel comfortable there.
Yep.
And then we are pushing, what is, what's the other one?
40.
40.
What's the comfort level on 40?
I think we're interested to see.
See, I think the, the problem is, for me to actually make a decision, I'd have to see what those things buy us.
Well, you can kind of see in the example that we used for this particular example is you would get the cops positions, you would get all of the Baker Tilly positions, you would get all of the additional public safety positions, and you would get transit.
Right.
So that's, that's as an example, what, what would come. So you did.
That's an example of something that could be done.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'd like to have, I'd, I'd like to get a little more finer into.
Sure. Yeah, we can certainly break it down a bit more.
What about the police facility? We, do we want to include it or not? We have to, yeah, we don't have any. But I think $600,000 is too much. I think you need to, if you can decrease that amount to $400,000, it would be great.
And then we would.
Well, Mayor, that may come down anyway because we haven't gotten the numbers for the sustainability yet. Right.
You're making it happen.
If I could just, yeah, I'll see what I can do on reducing those numbers.
This was, we need to look outsourcing the cleaning service. That one, we can save money. Maybe we don't need two janitor, we need one. You know what I mean? So.
Well, I don't, I don't think the cost of outsourcing cleaning is going to be significantly different from just hiring staff.
I would have some serious concerns about outsourcing cleaning for a police facility. You're, you're talking background investigations and all of those.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay, okay, okay.
Oh, no.
I agree with you. Okay, I agree. Maybe you need to consider one position.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at some of those things. But, you know, I also don't want to put the council in a precarious spot by underestimating things.
No, I know, but I think that there are, if, if we are going to build a sustainable building, I think the utility bill will be sustainable.
Well, the fact, the fact that we're building it here is not sustainable by definition.
But this is another conversation. Okay.
So, if I may, if I may, if I may, I think staff, from our perspective, we have what we need.
Okay.
We will work off of 25, 30, and 40. We'll put together a few examples of how, you know, and, don't get super specific, but at least get, you know, start filling those particular options with some considerations for the council. And then this is also helpful information as we continue our conversations with Mueller and city staff.
Can you share this with us or no?
Yeah, well, we're going to update it tomorrow to reflect some of the requests.
Okay.
And particularly on that, the tax information request. And would you guys prefer that we kind of start to, we maybe separate the 25, 30, and $40 options into its own slide too, maybe? Would that be helpful?
Maybe he need one or two.
Might be next week. Misty is at, at a finance director's conference currently, so.
So, so then the next question is, when do we want to meet again to chat about this at a committee of the whole meeting? Because we currently don't have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled in December.
So, if, if I may, let us connect with Mueller and talk next steps. And, I mean, we could potentially add an agenda item, depending on the length of conversation necessary in either December 12 meeting or January 9.
Well, I think this is going to take some significant discussion. I don't think this is something that can just be added onto a council agenda.
I don't know, well, I just don't know if we're at the point where there's going to be a need.
Can I ask, can I ask a recommendation or suggestion? Come, maybe, can you, because your concern is like going through the list, isn't it? Pick the position. That one is something that you want to have control?
I think if we're, well, at some point prior, I think some point prior to January, we have to decide which option we're going to go with. I don't think we can.
I don't know if you do because the survey is going to, still has to go out, and the survey won't have that level of specificity because I assume we'll probably survey a range of options in the survey, right? Maybe we highlight option 25, 30, and 40.
That could be. And then maybe we have some other options on there also. But I, either way, I think we still need to get, we still need to get justification for all these positions.
Yeah, we have that on our list. We'll send you the, the request sheets that were filled out for the budget process as well.
Joe, any thoughts up there?
What's happening with Dave?
Dave had to leave. He sent me a message.
No, I, the only thing I just want to go back to is just making sure we have a balance of consideration of various positions, that it's not, like, kind of all honed in on, you know, a specific profession. I think it's, it's going to be really important that, I, I mean, the theme I've been hearing in council meetings is that there is needs across the city in terms of staffing, and then I think we should honor that.
All right. Anyone else have anything?
Nope.
This was a really good discussion tonight. I think we got a lot of information out. We got a little bit into the weeds on some things, but that's okay because this is a big, this is a big step. So, thank you all for coming and participating.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Well, we have to announce that our next meeting currently is on January 24. And then we have a motion to adjourn. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.